So, every time.
Are you going to get back there?
Yeah, I think we can do that.
To record.
Yeah.
Good evening, I'm Shanna Cox, Chair of the Lewiston Planning Board. I welcome everyone here this evening, and I call this meeting to order. Today, we have an absence by one of our board members, and so the roll call throughout the evening will be served by you, sir. Would you call the roll for us?
Sure. Roger Dupree?
Here.
Michael Markout?
Present.
Mark Roy is present. Shanna Cox?
Here.
Amy Smith?
Here.
Alexander Pine?
Here.
Pen Thia Burns?
Here.
And Zoe Lindstrom?
Here.
And then, the staff tonight is Shelley Norton, Craig Tebow, and Linda Tripp. And John is absent, John Connor.
Daled it, thank you so much. Please let the record reflect that Lucy B. Stone is excused and absent today, which means that we will need a voting member from our associate members, and I believe it is Zoe's turn this evening. So Zoe, you'll be voting this evening with each of us.
Great.
Thanks. Alright, well done. You're going to get lots of practice at that tonight.
Yay.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
How about correspondence?
You have an email from John Blaze from Economic Development and myself. Oh, is it not on? Not close enough, sorry.
That's okay, thanks so much.
Yes.
I'm still working on my hearing, but it's really appreciated. Alright, so we do have one piece of correspondence all of us were provided today. Thank you very much. Alright, so while you're going to just dive right in, our first public hearing of the evening is the Planning Board making a recommendation to the City Council on an amendment to the Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 5, for changes to temporary onsite housing during construction of owner-occupied housing. Is this you today, Craig?
Happy to take it.
Kick us off.
So, you'll see the memo in your packet. It does list changes to all three articles, Article 2, Article 5, and Article 12. Just for the purpose of this motion, we'll just only discuss the Article 5 changes. Broken up into four sections here, so Article 5, Administration and Enforcement, Section 3E, Temporary Housing. There are four changes. Change A, Subsection 1, Allow Temporary Housing for New Construction of Owner-Ocupied Single-Family or Two-Family Dwelling. B, Subsection 1A, Remove Additional Requirement That Applicant Demonstrate Reasoning to Stay On-Site Rather Than Leave For Other Temporary Housing. C, Subsection 1C, which is now 1B, Increase The Duration Of A Permit To 12 Months With Option For Extension. And D, or now Subsection 1G, Now 1F, Allow For Off-Grid Systems And Waste Management Plans. You'll see that motion, oh, sorry, the changes are in the next part of your packet, and happy to address any questions.
Thank you. Discussion from the Board, we're seeing this language in a final format that we can send along to City Council. It looks, was strikingly like we asked for it to look, so well done, and I appreciate that. Any discussion about the changes that are being proposed? Mr. Dupree?
Thank you. Craig, in Section 12, in Subsection 2A, Potentially Hazardous Foods, does the staff or the city have a listing of what they consider hazardous foods?
Sorry. Can we, I think that, Mr. Dupree, I think that you are picking up on the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, and it might even be under this item, but it would be helpful, I think, to take temporary housing separate from the other changes. And so we're on the Temporary Housing, Article 5, in Appendix A, as a starting point. And those are all the changes that Craig just overviewed for us before we dive into the other documents. One second. Mr. Dupree, is it okay if I move on from you?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Markout?
Is the Appendix A the sole document attached to 4A on the agenda?
I believe that's the case.
Yes.
Except for the single-family dwelling, which is separated out. Yeah.
Which is definitions, which is B.
So, any discussion or questions? Alex?
Quick question. My memory's sort of failing me. Where did we fall on talking about single-family in the definition, or in the sort of Section 1 addition there? So, construction of a new owner-occupied, single-family detached dwelling, or owner-occupied two-family dwelling on a vacant lot. So, this would be like if you were, I'm just, you know, going through our, you know, if you were building, let's say, a single-family house with two ADUs, which you're allowed to do, or would it, or four, actually, right? If you're on a single-family lot.
If it, I think in that scenario, you'd be looking at a duplex that was owner-occupied with two ADUs. That's how you'd get to four units in a single-family. Is that right?
Well...
It kind of depends on what zone you're in. I'm sorry, what?
I guess where I'm wondering is, you know, we talk about this, you know, as you're allowed to do this when you're constructing an owner-occupied, single-family detached dwelling, or an owner-occupied two-family dwelling. And I remember in our last meeting, we talked a little bit about some of the difficulty with talking about this in that framework because of LD 2003, and allowing, you know, multiple dwellings on a quote-unquote "single-family" lot. Now, we could just say like, well, if you're going to build an ADU, we're not going to have, or, you know, if you're going to build two additional ADUs along with your single-family, we're not going to let you park a trailer there while you're building it, like, you know, that's a different class.
It, to refresh all of our memories, and this came not in the original discussion, but in follow-up, and then was incorporated into our last discussion, the new E, as recommended, and the prior F, so this was no change and was always there, limited the amount of temporary housing regardless of how many units are being constructed in the formation of those units. And if that's the "why" that you're getting at, that's how it was addressed, and that was where most of the Board's conversation was.
Yeah, I think, yeah, this is, this is going to, we're permitting this for the construction of a single-family detached dwelling. If someone wanted to build a single-family detached dwelling that also had an ADU within the structure, that means they couldn't do this? Or is that a two-family dwelling, so it's okay? That's all I was wondering. And the answer could be, yeah, no, it's not, not okay.
So, it would still be a single-family, so I guess if they intended to, if they built the single-family but hadn't built the ADU yet, and they plan to live in that, under this currently, the way it's written, you wouldn't be able to have it during the ADU construction.
Okay. So, I don't know if other people on the Board have concerns around that? Like, do we, are we that worried about providing this to people who also want to put an ADU in their house, or does that just feel like too minutia?
I mean, I could, let me test run a scenario, if that's okay. Brand-new lot, single-family is going to go on that lot, they are planning on using the ADU as well, there's nothing on the lot, they pull in a temporary housing, they get one, they're allowed to keep it. They then are simultaneously building the ADU, or they create a new ADU, that would still be the establishment of single-family on a single-family lot, based on 2003. They would still get only one temporary housing at a time. The question that, your question raises for me that feels unanswered, and I'm not sure that you're asking it, is if there was an empty lot that a four-unit, which is the maximum for owner-occupied, owner-occupied, would that allow? Because duplex is called out clearly, single-family is called out clearly, 2003 calls in the ADUs on either of those scenarios, and still allows the maximum of one, but always one, while you're building. So theoretically, it's a single-family detached ADU. If the family wants to put their mother-in-law in the temporary house as they build the ADU, I feel like this language would still allow for that under the consideration of staff and permits. But I don't know what a three- or four-unit owner-occupied multifamily would do, and that feels like the language that's missing from here. Pen Thia, you had something that felt connected, and I don't know if it's useful to add it before we ask staff to answer.
Well, given what you just said, I don't know if it is, but, I mean, doesn't it really just apply to the owner-occupied unit? What they're requesting? So, I don't know how you could bound that, but that, that was the rationale for allowing folks to have a trailer. So, it's a way to get yourself onto that property, and whatever is appropriate to the zoning after that, you have a place to live.
Yeah. It feels like a triple-decker or four-decker owner-occupied would not be addressed. It would be prohibited to have temporary housing if you were building three or four units and were owner-occupying. That feels like maybe the only gap, but I think it addresses ADUs in current language, the way ADUs are incorporated by law.
Okay.
To answer that question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry that that opens a new question.
It does.
That your face says, oh, that is a new question.
Well, and I'm not 100% sure that it does address ADUs, because we, we don't necessarily treat them as single-family homes, right? So, they are, they are different as far as like what you're applying for. But I don't know as there's any great harm if you wanted to change it to construction of a new owner-occupied dwelling unit.
Can you say that again?
Construction of a new owner-occupied dwelling unit. Could say that.
That would be great. I'm still satisfied with the fact that you're never going to have more than one on a lot at a time.
Yeah.
And I feel like that addresses the concerns this Board really spent the most time talking about the implications of. Would any, so the amended language that we'd be putting forward to Council, in the Appendix A, Article 5 document, that says Section 3 General Provisions, under Temporary Housing, Section 1, you see the underlined text would now read, "Or upon the construction of a new owner-occupied dwelling unit."
Yes.
On a vacant lot. Linda and Shelley, did you capture that? Okay. Discussion about that amendment, are folks okay with that and why we're talking about it?
Question?
So, if we're opening it up in the second half, shouldn't we open it up in the first half? So, temporary housing on lots where owner-occupied dwellings have been damaged?
Yep.
So, that's pretty much the trail end of the third line and the start of the fourth line.
Do you see that one, too?
Yep.
And we wouldn't, and we wouldn't want to have any bounding for like, of up to four-unit, you know, like residential property, just like, if, if I'm owner-occupying a 50-unit apartment building, I can park one trailer there while my 50 units being built.
I mean, I don't think that's the case, nor would I be excited about supporting that personally.
Yep.
Commercial law require, anything five units or more, whether it's owner-occupied or not, is no longer in the residential market.
Got it.
It's in the commercial.
So, so four units or less is going to be covered by this being a residential property?
Yeah.
Perfect.
That's the intent. Catch me if I'm wrong, Craig's face.
I mean, I think in real estate, you're right, that that's the dividing line, but I don't think that's a...
And finance.
Right. In our code, it might be a little bit of a gray area.
I think a sort of scenario that might give an example is a 12-unit condo that is owner-occupied, and they're, you know, rebuilding that, or someone wants to put a trailer on that complex. That seems like that would fit the language that we've inserted here.
Because it's owner-occupied? Great. I don't have any concerns with that. I don't know that others do.
Don't you think some of the implications of, I mean, the permit is for 12 months with some extension, and so if someone has like these grand ideas of building something really big, 12 months is not going to...
Yeah.
It just seems like this is a misfit for, or something that would get too big.
I think, I can appreciate what you're saying. I actually feel those other things keep the intent of our goals in line, and if, and then incentivizes a 12-unit condo person like, well, maybe, maybe six months or 12 months makes sense, but I'm not going to plan on more.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alex?
So, my proposal would be, because I agree with you, like, four units sort of seems like a nice upper ceiling, everyone, you know, other, other things, finance, whatever, you know, real estate cares about that, so could we just modify the language to say "construction of a new owner-occupied dwelling with, you know, up to, up to four units"?
I think what Craig is saying, what I hear Shelley saying, and what I'm offering, is if we take out the reference to the number of units in totality, then the safeguards that these other language changes put into place means that someone who might want to put up 80 units and owner-occupy are going to have to be disincentivized of having a mobile unit that they're going to live in for the duration of an 80-unit build, because they will still only get 12 months.
That's okay.
And so, the other safeguards makes me, I don't think it'll be much of a problem.
So, you don't think we need that?
I don't, I don't think so, and I think that, I think the whole point of this language and some of the other work we're doing is around incentivizing owner-occupancy and removing barriers, and if somebody wants to owner-occupy and plans to commit to owner-occupying their 80-unit multifamily, then more power to them.
They want to live in that trailer?
And they can live in a mobile unit for a year.
Yeah.
Right, like, but they have to be owner-occupied, and that has to be, and some other restrictions are still in place.
Sounds good to me.
They don't get, if it's 80 condos, they don't get 80 trailers, they get one.
Mm-hmm.
Good luck all living together for the 12 months that this policy offers you.
A big trailer.
So, I feel like the other safeguards would safeguard around the concerns and intent that we have.
I agree.
Which Shelley would essentially leave you naming owner-occupied dwellings and stripping references to single-family or number of units.
Yeah, so I think I'd also go singular with that, so it would be...
I'm so sorry. Can you pull the microphone close or speak up for me tonight?
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe used as temporary housing on lots where an owner-occupied dwelling
Yeah.
has been damaged or destroyed by fire, flood, lightning, wind, structural failure, any other cause, or upon the construction of a new owner-occupied dwelling unit on a vacant lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
That feels right. Does anyone object to that language change as amended, and understands that that's what we would be recommending to City Council?
I just want to give Craig and Linda a moment, because Linda actually works with the building permits, and Craig and I don't, so.
That's great.
I didn't know if you had a question.
While you take a moment, I'm going to check the folks who are looking at other papers. Roger, do you have any concerns with that language change?
I'm good.
Okay. Mike, do you have any concerns with that language change?
I don't support it to begin with.
So, the language change doesn't change your opinion?
Correct.
Great, that's good enough. Mark, thumbs, thumbs? Thanks. It's not an official vote, you can weigh in. I'll take your nod.
Thank you.
Okay. Mike, I would say you should probably be prepared to give any rationale if you vote against, because they've been asking.
It's very confusing how this is laid out, too. Looks like somewhat of a merger, you know, crisscross between A and B, and one of the support documents.
In the, are you just in the temporary housing one, or are you going beyond?
Oh, I'm looking at temporary housing, but there's definitions, it's like a separate agenda item, but it's, both of them are interconnected in some way.
So, you're concerned with the memo and the motions that we'd be taking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seriously confusing between the, the first issue of, let's see, where is the vocabulary? Temporary housing. And then the definition of detached dwellings, removing required structure, having length to width ratio. So, those seem to be separate issues, but, you know, the code that's being changed is similar code for each of these. So, it's like presented as separate in one fashion, but combined in another.
Well, I think I'm aiming to have our discussion be around each document, but the motion as presented anyway does assume we've discussed each piece separately, and then we're motioning on all as a bundle.
Correct.
Which means, feel free to raise any concerns about temporary housing, and then we'll talk through the rest before we move to action.
Well, temporary housing, I, I still have grief as I made the comments at earlier meetings with respect to the conditions around the temporary housing, as far as the electrical grid, as far as the waste removal, it's going to turn into some sort of unwieldy product.
Your concerns are in F, the new F, prior G. Is that accurate? Just trying to make sure we're looking in the same spot that you're lifting up concern with. So...
Yeah, the new F, which refers to off-grid system, and...
With authorization from the electrical inspector?
Yeah, that's, that's the electrical item. Not sure where the waste removal...
As well as connected to municipal or private water and sewer.
So, those two items are in F.
Yeah, or in lieu of this, "A Waste Management Plan and Water Plan Shall Be Approved For Staff Review and Approval If They Are Not Connected."
And if I remember right, I can't speak to the detail, but the length of time seemed to stretch a little bit from the first meeting to...
The length of time is noted in Item B, which is the new one, and you'll see that it's a one-time 12-month, but then only one extension.
But it went from 90 days to 12 months.
Yeah, and that was based on our early conversation, the request to staff to check with developers and builders on realistic timelines, and to reduce, almost assumedly, requests for extension based on what it takes to build these days, and then our discussion of that feedback proposing these changes at our last meeting.
I can't support the temporary housing changes.
That's okay, but you didn't have any concerns that were new for you about the language that we just talked about in the first introductory paragraph?
Correct.
Great. Did anyone else have anything to state? Okay. Did staff confer?
Yes, we're all set.
Great. Any other Board comments on the proposed changes in this document? Okay, so, should we make one motion for all of these separate documents all at once tonight, as proposed in the memo? We're all in agreement that those changes to the first paragraph is what we are saying when we say "as presented and amended."
Yes, and just remember to do a public hearing.
I will.
Okay.
There's so much public.
I'll jump in and say we did hand out a, a separate memo that was essentially identical, except it had two separate motions. One motion addressed only the Article 5 changes, the other motion addressed the Article 2 and 12 changes, which is...
Sorry.
So, the differences.
Is this what you just handed out tonight?
If you, it's, if you choose to.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I am all for doing two votes. I'm just trying to see how you parse them out for us. What is the intent of the difference between the two?
One...
As it relates to the way that you've given us three buckets, I will call them, Article 2, Article 5, and Article 12.
Just could be simpler to vote on one and get it out of the way, and then be able to focus on Articles 2 and 12. In substance, Article 5 changes are separate from the Article 2 and 12 changes. Article 2 and 12 focus more on the home occupation language. Article 5 is exclusively the temporary housing language.
Great. So, Mike, for your sake, the Article 5 that we just discussed is the first motion, and the second motion is the definitions in the other document.
But they're still intertwined.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great. So then I'm going to open, because we're going to take temporary housing, Article 5 separate. Great. So I'm going to open this for a public hearing. If there were members of the public here, they could choose to walk to the podium, introduce themselves, and give their name, seeing that there are none. We'll give a moment for anyone to come in from the hallway that's not visible, and close the public hearing. Any last questions or discussion for the Board around, for the staff around Article 5? So then I would be seeking this motion, the first action necessary under the updated memo, with a note as amended tonight.
Sure.
Someone's got to do it.
Okay. We're going to make a motion pursuant to Article 7, Section 4, and Article 17, Section 5 of the Zoning and Land Use Code, to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for amendments to, or for amendments as proposed tonight to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 5, Administration and Enforcement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we call the roll? Seeing none, can you call the roll?
Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Markout?
No.
Mark Roy, yes. Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
Zoe Lindstrom?
Yes.
Motion passes. Stephanie, clarifying questions for Mike, or shall we move forward?
No, thank you. He already did noted and...
All right. Would you like to pick up definitions or performance standards?
We'll go to Article 12, Performance Standards, and then if there are no issues, then we'll go to Article 2, but the definitions would clearly be changed if...
Great.
So, turning back to the memo, the Article 12, Performance Standards, Section 22, Home Occupations, there are four separate amendments here. Subsection 1I, Reformat Subsection 1H to a Bullet List for More Clarity. Subsection 1H, Expand The Allowance For Home Occupations to Now Serve Up To Four Unrelated Clients At A Time on A Limited Basis, and To Allow Farmstands To Serve Customers Without Requiring Appointments. Subsection 2A, Allow Home Bakeries Limited To Non-Potentially Hazardous Foods as A Home Occupation Tier 1. Allow Farmstands 40 Square Feet or Smaller as Tier 1. Allow Occupations That Serve Up To Four Unrelated Clients on A Limited Basis as Tier 1. Allow On-Site Sales By Appointment Only as Tier 1. And then, Subsection 2B, Require Farmstands Larger Than 40 Square Feet as Tier 2. Require Home Kitchens That Produce Potentially Hazardous Foods as Tier 2. And Allow Welding As A Tier 2. This was previously prohibited as a home occupation. Again, those changes are spelled out further in the ordinance language, and we will welcome any questions.
And the, to Mr. Markout at the point, the definition that identifies what a potentially hazardous food is provided in definitions.
That's right.
And this does not need to be addressed here. Thanks. Questions? Comments? Roger, and then Alex.
Yeah, I'd like to address the original question that I asked regarding hazardous foods. Do you have a listing of this in the city code, or somewheres where it could be documented that people that want to do this can get a copy of it?
So, our city health inspector, they did put together a definition for the potentially hazardous foods, and that is in Article 2 definitions. So, you know, that is, will be available in our ordinance if approved tonight, or I guess, if approved by the City Council. And, short answer is yes.
Specifically, it's any food that requires control for time or temperature for the safety of the food. So are you, which, that's in the definition, but are you looking for a list of...
And I'm looking for a list, you know, in other words, you know, somebody, you know, that wants to have a home bakery, you know, and they have an idea as far as what they want to produce as a bakery, do they have a listing of what is potentially hazardous and not hazardous, so they don't have to go through and...
Cheesecake versus cupcakes, refrigerated best cream frosting, that kind of thing.
Yeah. So, that's going to, the state has different licensing, so they would also be getting state licensing that would clarify that some, most of these potentially hazardous food, my understanding, is you're not allowed to do them as a home occupation with this, under the state license. So I think that would be clear at the, when they get their state license.
I can say from personal experience looking at it, yeah, people will be able to figure it out. It's, it's pretty clear from the state, like, this is what you can do as a home occupation. So that's where you'd go first, and then when you come to the, the city, they would say, okay, you're doing a non-hazardous food. This is the permitting process.
And that's, it's not being changed, Roger, but that language is called out in B, where it says, "No additional state and local licenses may be required in occupations meeting that criteria shall require a conditional use permit." That's been standing.
Question for staff. Are home bakeries the only non-hazardous home food business?
Essentially, yes. That's what our sanitarian has told us, that it's pretty restrictive what the state lets you do at home.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I guess...
I mean, I'd say all the vegetables in the farm stand are also included in that one.
Yeah, I mean...
Not a bakery.
Yeah, what I was wondering is just like, would there be any advantage to, instead of saying licensed home bakery, saying just like licensed home food businesses? Like, just, it's, it's a food business that does potentially, yeah, non-hazardous foods, and just leave it at that, rather than like bakeries? You know, so if state guidelines change, our ordinance, you know, keeps going.
Was there any rationale to why you guys picked the language around bakery specifically? Versus food producer of non-hazardous food items?
I mean, Louis had put this together, and what he told us was, you pretty much can't do anything but a bakery. Like, as far as candy, pickles, like, those are not home occupations under the state rules. But if you want to make it a little vague in case state guidelines change, I don't think there's any harm in that.
And making it vague would actually just making it more specific and less about bakeries, but it would be using language like food production of non-hazardous food items.
Right.
So it'd be, it would be precise.
Yeah.
Their desire from the...
It'd be more general.
Planning board to see that language change?
Would cannabis be included or considered a hazardous?
It's not something you can do as a home business. It's a commercial.
Why wouldn't a homeowner like to do that and make brownies with cannabis?
It's regulated differently, so you can't do that and sell it, unless you're a medical provider. It, it's regulated totally differently under the state.
They would like to do it. They could do it legally.
Oh, right. They, they could do it. It's not, would not be a home business, and we would not license it as such.
So what you're saying is the home business can't do cannabis?
Correct.
Somebody working with cannabis would have to go through state licensing, which would prohibit them from having a home occupation, so none of this would apply to them.
And we have local licenses for production of marijuana products, which is what that would be.
Thank you. Mr. Roy?
You added welding. What about forging or other metalworking?
Great question. That might be beyond our knowledge of metalworking as staff.
Okay.
But, but our thought was, if you can do woodworking, why couldn't you make metal sculpture or something like that?
Because I know the, you know, the metalworking school in Auburn, and there's a lot of students locally that want to make...
Do some basic blacksmithing at home.
Well, not just basic blacksmithing, but also sell, you know, home forged knives and stuff like that.
Could we just say metalworking to me?
That's what I was wondering. Is there any sort of state, like, any other regulations? Could we add, instead of welding, just metalworking, which would include welding and forging?
Yeah, metal or woodworking shops.
That sounds okay to us.
Okay. So in B would be changing the new language of welding ore to metal ore?
Metalworking or woodworking.
I think just changing welding to metalworking.
Yeah.
Great.
And just going back to the...
Sorry. Are folks supportive of that change?
Yep.
It's great, because it was a clean proposal of the language change. Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, I was going to just go back to A. We, we asked for, are people supportive? And I think I saw a little bit of a nod from Amy, but like, this isn't a...
That was all I saw. No one spoke up, including you. Would you like to propose a change?
I, I, I was under the impression that I had already implied that I would like to see a change.
Yes. Could you propose the change you'd like to see?
Sure. Let's see, state, let's see, state and city licensed home food businesses that are limited to non-potentially hazardous foods.
Yeah. Did you guys catch that language change?
Yes.
Is there anyone who is not okay with the language change that Alex just proposed?
So bakeries becomes food businesses.
How's it change for current?
How does it cha, so it's, it changes the language that's newly introduced, and you said current, so I guess I'm just being specific. But in 2A, on the third page of this document, it starts about halfway down that first paragraph, state and city licensed home, and so all of that is new language being added?
Okay, I'm looking through on page. What page?
So we're in the three-page handout that starts with Appendix A, Article 12.
Yeah.
It's got a staple in it. And then once you open it, on the third page, so the one on the right facing, in Section 2A, Home Occupation, about halfway down, you'll see some new language being proposed that's underlined that starts with state and city licensed. And so that's not current language. That's new language being proposed, and we're proposing that it then reads, state and city licensed home food businesses that are limited to non-potentially hazardous foods. So this language around whether it would be okay for a home occupation in Tier 1 would still be directed by state licensing requirements. But it doesn't explicitly call out bakeries. And as discussion has already noted, jams, jellies, pickles are still going to go into Section 2, Tier 2.
So essentially, we're just moving bakeries or similar non-hazardous foods from B to A. So instead of going to the Board of Appeals and going through that process, someone who wants to do a home bakery can just move forward with a simple home occupation permit from our department.
And that's what proposed the initial language, but what we're discussing right now is changing the language that you brought forward and proposed tonight to remove the word bakery and put in food-based.
Food businesses?
Yes.
Which can be other things than bakeries?
Theoretically, though we're not clear what, but it allows the law to change, and it still restricts them only to non-potentially hazardous foods. Anything that, as state licensing requires or deems potentially hazardous food items would still fall in B, Tier 2.
And hazardous foods are defined as...
Well, that's in the definition section, which is fun tonight, but the, anything that requires time or temperature control, of which there will be a list created, and a list that is managed by the licensing board.
So hazard would be if something had to be cooked to a certain temperature?
Potato salad, cheesecake, something that's both cooked to a certain temperature and held at a certain temperature, or is limited for the time that it's held. And again, all of that's in state licensing. The big change that we're proposing to City Council is to allow non-potentially hazardous to be considered for food home occupations. Any other thoughts on that proposed change from bakeries? Zoe?
Not directly that proposed change, but just a couple of punctuation things in that same paragraph, if that would be appropriate at this time.
Please.
In the first sentence, we have the phrase, "for which products are sold off-site or online or onsite by appointment only." I'd kind of like to see off-site, comma, online, comma, or onsite by appointment only.
Of that.
And then further down, towards the bottom, one-chair salon. I would have the hyphen between one and chair, and not between chair and salon. So, one-chair salon.
Yep. Go grammar queen. Any other ones?
Those are the only ones in that, in that paragraph.
Alex?
What was the reasoning behind 40 square feet for a farm stand? And does that, is that, like, I'm thinking about farm stands I've seen in my life. I've seen some farm stands where you can't, like, walk into them, you know, you're sort of just like reaching into the shed. Other ones where you can walk in. Is this sort of like square footage of the structure, or square footage of retail space?
It was a little bit of both, and it was a little arbitrary, too. We thought 40 square feet would be, would limit the amount of produce that could be, you know, sold, would limit the amount of, you know, traffic, the amount of sort of volume of nuisance being created around the site. And, yeah, we thought 40 was a good figure, but we are open to input.
And our thought was, and I don't know if 40 is the right number, our thought was that to be a home occupation, really, it makes sense, since we aren't requiring, I mean, we were thinking of really those sheds, like you're talking about, where someone's selling eggs, or selling pies, or maybe selling like three things. They're not selling like a big spread of things. So that way, you're not going to have a lot of people that are going to be stopping by. I mean, hopefully, there's not a real run on, like, five people stopping for eggs.
It's not grocery store traffic.
Yeah, at the same time. Yep. But 40 may not be the right number, and I agree with you that how do we figure out what that square footage is, if it's more of like a lean-to style than an actual four walls?
Separate from that question, I, I do think that we should settle the fact that I take this to mean, and I think this would be far easier for both your intent and for, for tracking, that 40 square feet is the footprint, and not like shelf space or merchandising space.
Yes.
That, which was fundamentally a piece that Alex was asking.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, yeah. So it would be, yeah.
Whatever you can cram into a 40-square-foot blueprint, footprint.
Right. So smaller than an eight-by-10 shed, more of, you know...
Four-by-10, I think is the math.
A six-by-six, or, yeah, four-by-10, something like that, which may still be big. I don't know.
Forty feels big to me.
Eight-by-five could be big.
It feels very representative, and a little bit larger than 90% of the farm stands you see that aren't a full Blackies. Yeah, for what that's worth. Amy?
I was just going to say, 40 feels small, given that you go to the farmer's market, and everybody's got a 10-by-10 tent, which is 100 square feet, if my math is right. So, I, I think that they're not all permanent structures either, right? At a home occupation, they might put up the tent, put out a table.
We do have a definition of farm stand, which is more permanent.
I believe it's 500 square feet for a farm stand is the definition in Article II.
Don't you also have to take it down?
Yeah. And to your point, I mean, 40 square feet, anything larger than that would still be permitted in the home occupation language. It would just be needed as a Tier 2. And so you would need to go to a conditional use permit to the Board of Appeals for that.
Yeah.
That is a good point, Amy. So our farm stand definition does say a temporary structure containing less than 500 square feet, or floor area for the sales of agricultural products between May 1st and December 1st. So it is supposed to be taken down.
Has any of that really influenced the Tier 1 language that we're looking at? It's a question for the board as much as staff.
I, I agree with everyone that I think, or with what some folks have said, where 40 seems like a nice number, and we're talking about 40 square feet of retail space. I think going to look at the definition, it has brought up that, you know, this is a good change, and it seems like maybe we have a little more change that we need to do around farm stands, because, yeah, it could be kind of a pain in the neck for folks. Because I, I guess when I think about like 40 square feet of retail space, like, I'm thinking about this as a more permanent structure, you know, it's that egg shack on the side of the road that is up year-round. No one's going to take that down.
Right.
And, you know, to Amy's point of like, oh, if someone sets up a 10-by-10, like, that feels very temporary to me, and not like something that we'd even, you know, that would still be a home occupation Tier 1 in my mind. You know, it's a temporary structure. You'd take the thing down. It's up for the weekend, probably.
A pop-up.
Yeah, pop-up thing. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I'm trying to think about how to formulate these.
I don't know that you could say that a pop-up square foot is, is 100 feet, so much as the two tables they put in it, which is the actual structure.
Yeah.
Because if you put a tarp up that didn't have any legs, you just tied it to trees, then like, what is your, so I, even 40 feet of table space is...
So like 40, 40 feet, or thinking about someone who did this out of their garage, or like a carport, for example, you know, we, I don't know.
Bust them into Tier 2, and they'd have to make sure people knew then, and was clear on that use, and they'd still have a pathway to use it that way.
Okay. I mean, my thought was sort of going off of what you were saying of like, 40 square feet of retail space. So if they have some tables there, and like, you know, their car's parked in the rest of the carport, but right on the edge of the carport, there's two tables, that's under 40 square feet, they're good to go. You know, if someone wants to set up some tables on the edge.
But all of that makes sense to me. I do think that what I hear you saying is, can we put a footnote in reviewing farm stand language at a different point around, particularly the temporary piece, I think is prohibitive and not aligned with some of the other strategies this community is taking, but notwithstanding on today's document.
Yeah, let's keep going.
Generally, we're okay with 40.
Yeah.
Knowing that it's a Tier 1, it doesn't prohibit people from doing more. It just means there's a little bit more process for doing more.
And, and the language we want is 40 square feet of retail space.
Can you make that amendment?
Yeah, I don't know what that actually means, though. Is the retail space where they're standing, or you're saying it's shelf space?
I was intending it as like where they're standing. Space, space intended for retail business.
So it's the, it's the floor plan of the area that you're using for the business?
The table or the pop-up, Alex, because standing, you're standing on the ground under the pop-up, and it's not the table space.
I was en, I was envisioning it to be the pop-up, or, or the, the roof, right? I mean, if I'm standing outside of it, and I'm pulling stuff off the shelves, then where I'm standing probably isn't. It's really kind of where your roof structure is, I would guess.
Likewise, half of the pop-up space is where the staff is and not your retail space.
I mean, well, I guess...
So, listen, I'm just pointing out how ludicrous this is, and we need to pick a, pick a thing, and stick with it. But in that scenario, where my table is halfway in the center, because rain, it always rains when I have a pop-up, then half of that space is the table and available to the customer, and the other half that I'm standing in is not retail space, it's staff space, by this conversation's standards, and I'm just saying it's crazy, but we should pick something and stick to it, particularly for the ability for you guys to know what you're talking about when someone proposes it.
I don't, I don't know exactly what you mean by staff space. In my mind, if somebody is there, and they have open hours, then it is not a home occupation. It wouldn't fall under this at all. This is an unmanned, if you will, or unpersoned.
So no staff space.
People aren't supposed to walk around the back of those tables when I see them. I never feel comfortable walking around the back of those tables when I see them.
Plus, isn't it all based off of the 25% of the square foot?
Is it?
Yeah, of the entire, of the entire dwelling.
Yeah.
So it all has to be based off of square footage, so why don't...
Except for the farm stand, which is not in the dwelling, and that's the call-out of the problem.
Well, that's, well, I mean, but you would, you would say, well, what's the, what's the footprint of the, of the farm stand?
Right.
So now it's the banner, it's the...
Retail space, the footprint of the farm stand.
Yeah, we have typically with home occupation that have, for home occupations, where part of it is outdoors, we still have taken, you know, we've calculated 25% of the floor area of the house, and we've used that floor area as, you know, space that can be used sort of outside the house.
Great. Then what's the 40 feet introduced for at all if we already have a formula that's been working?
It's for the, it's for the differentiation between Tier 1 and Tier 2. That's it. That's all it is.
So can we, would somebody like to concretely propose an alternative number to 40 if they are not comfortable with 40 in the Tier 1 then? Just to keep us moving. I heard 100. 100 with a pop-up of a 10-by-10, which is fairly universal. Don't get the big 12-1, 10-by-10. We'd be looking at 100 square feet.
Yeah, but you can't really look at a weekend farmer's market as a farm stand. I mean, that's completely different. This is a stand that's in front of somebody's house that's selling vegetables, eggs, and whatnot. That's what we're concerned about, not the pop-up that's at the farmer's market on the weekend.
Well, if it was an actual stand built, then we're extra concerned, because then it's not temporary at all, and doesn't qualify under a whole different thing we're not even viewing today. This is the conversation for sure. I think I pictured what you are naming that you pictured. I think what we're realizing is this language doesn't clarify that, that if it was a permanent structure, it actually struggles to be a farm stand at all, based on a definition we're not considering today, and that we are indeed talking about both what you are envisioning, Roger, and the likeliness of two six-foot tables spread out under a pop-up, which would be temporary, which would fit the farm stand definition, and of which is this conversation.
It would make you a Tier 2 occupation.
Did that, you are right to raise that. That is the conversation we're actively having. No, there is not a shared universal vision of what a farm stand looks like, and for those of us who envisioned the one you did, it's actually not a farm stand at all by our qualifications, which we're going to revisit at a later date. Mr. Merkot?
So, I'm hearing a couple of different things here. All of these home occupations, whether it's a farm stand outside the home itself, or, trying to find an example here, music lessons inside the living room, and these are all, could be permanent, right? I don't understand the differentiation between the temporary and permanent in respect to this discussion.
It's technically not, and the only reason that it came up is because the definition for farm stand, which is being introduced as a called-out occupation here, in our language of which we're not reviewing today, that's where it differentiates between temporary and permanent, and that is the only place in which temporary is related to item 2A.
The only item in 2A?
Yes, of which the temporary... Yes, of which the temporary piece matters. And we're hoping to address that separately and clarify that in language around farm stands. So the conversation here is really around forty square feet being tier one. Knowing that above forty square feet could be dealt with in the process used previously and in tier two.
And. The distinction between tier one and tier two as far as. Licensing or performance standards?
So there's no licensing. The difference is that a home occupation one is a forty-dollar use permit from code enforcement. If there's a requirement that they would look at, um, is it, is it forty? It's right, yeah. Um, if there's requirements, uh, for, you know, depending upon what the use is, there might be review of building plans or changes to the structure, um, or if they're building something.
Or professional services with regards to. Granting them permission to do this. Uh, I, I guess what I'm saying is.
They, they don't go and check whether someone's a licensed massage therapist or a licensed therapist. But then the difference with home occupation two is it's, um, a higher fee. You have to put together materials and go to the, um, Board of Appeals. And the reason for going to the Board of Appeals is to be able to, you, you know, have a, essentially a conditional use permit type permit, um, that would have more scrutiny. So how big a farm stands? What are your hours, you know, how, where are people gonna park if more people come? You know, that sort of thing. So that's.
Tier two would be a conditional use permit, not to the appeals board. Conditional one would be just a staff review of sorts.
That's right.
And, and a fee structure difference. I guess I better understand the difference between tiers one and two. I, I did have a question about something I don't see here and something that I'm reading in section three. Where it says unless specifically this, it has a home occupation one and two, this section does not regulate any home occupation. Is there a list of, uh, home occupations that wouldn't fit one or two, but something like a zero?
Yeah, so like an internet business. So if I'm a therapist and I only do Zoom, you know, telehealth, then, then that wouldn't be required.
I, I see home office work and telecommunity.
Yeah, those, those are the typical things or, um.
Communications.
Are we requiring tier one for someone who's like a taxi service and basically it's just their business office at home? Or like a cleaner who cleans off premise?
We've required home occupation tier one, uh, some examples recently have been home cleaning businesses where they'll keep supplies at their home, uh, they'll maybe have a, a small office where they schedule appointments. And then most of the work pertaining to the home occupation will be done offsite at, at another property. We've, that has typically been a home occupation tier one. And, um, as Shelley mentioned, a, a, a no permit required, we'll say, we'll call it a tier zero, would be, um, telecommunity work that involves no required travel and no, there's no visual impact. There's no, um. Well, that's exactly right. There's no, there's no impact.
What, what about, uh, home seamstresses and sewing and the like?
That would probably be a tier one, cause they're gonna have a space where they're doing the occupation.
And if they're doing any sort of sales or, you know, online.
Specifically meeting with a client, but one at a time. Taking measurements.
I know of a few that have done that, whether it was permitted by code or not, I have no clue. And this is any residential, uh, section of town?
Yes, yep. We allow it in apartments. We allow it in standalone, single-family homes throughout the city.
Okay, thank you.
Alex?
I was gonna make a proposal to change the tier one farm stand definition. Cause I think what we're really driving at is like, we don't wanna have someone who has like a huge farm stand. Uh, so if we said, uh, sixteen or twenty, twenty square feet or less of retail space, such as a, a, a folding table or similar. Like, I think that's, that's what we're going for, right? Like, there's the mini fridge with the eggs in it. There's a folding table with some vegetables on it that you put on your porch. We don't really care where the table goes or where the fridge is and how many square feet that is. It's really more sort of the, the size of the, you know, the, the amount of, um, business traffic, right? And so just like a little table, uh, seems like maybe the, the definition we want.
Yeah, I heard you say twenty.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, an eight-foot table, which is somewhat standard.
Yeah.
By three feet bust you up to twenty-four.
Okay. I was going for two feet. I couldn't remember off the top of my head how wide.
Yeah, they're three. I do a lot of table work.
Okay. So whatever, whatever an eight, eight, eight by three table is, you know?
That's twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
And it's just one.
Great.
I don't, I, I don't have a problem with the forty, cause I think it still limits pretty well. I think the language that we really wanna see added is farm stands, twenty-four, thirty-six, forty, square feet of retail footprint. And I think it's, I think it's.
Such as.
I mean, I don't know that we need to get that in here, but I think it's the, I think it's the ability to say it's the retail footprint so that these folks aren't measuring six sets of shelves and saying like, oh, you're at a hundred feet of shelf space. It's the footprint and it is the footprint of the retail space and not the awning above it. So if you put in footprint retail space in a way that makes sense for you to enforce. Does anyone wanna see it moved up or down from forty?
I'd rather see it stay at forty.
So as long as the footprint is within that, but sixty stories tall.
You could go sixty stories tall, particularly in the residential places that we're looking at. Yeah, I mean, I say, to me, yes.
It's a joke.
No, 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 but, but like, that's my point is like, if you can get away with it and somebody doesn't call code and they don't come out and bust you for it, more power to you.
If you can stack that cordwood, the campwood.
It's vegetables. It's vegetables, like at some point.
Zucchini mountain, we're here for it.
I hate siding towards the like, yes, it's a great point. Thank you. I appreciate the humor. Do you have what you need, staff, on the language that we proposed there?
The only other thing that, um, we haven't talked about is there was a change to serving. Previously, it was serving one client at a time for home occupation one. So if you're a therapist, music teacher, art teacher, you've got one client or one family at a time. So it could be a couple of kids, but they're all related. So you've only got essentially one car, hopefully that's coming and going. Um, it's a little restrictive, so we thought that if you could do, we have two times a day that you could do up to four unrelated clients. So, and like a group therapy or an art class where you've got four children or four people in group therapy. I don't know if that's starting to get a little bit more traffic-wise than you guys wanna consider for that. So that's kind of up to you, whether you think that staff is, whether that's a good direction or not.
I mean, I think your math doesn't make sense. Cause you, did you limit it? Is the language no more than two times a day?
Yes.
How are you having four unrelated clients visit? More, less than two times a day?
So if you have a class, um, we'll, we'll stick with art classes.
Ah, and then it's two classes a day?
That's right.
Great. Love that. Thank you. Good example. Okay. So just my question previously was, do you have what you need for the language on farm stands?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do.
It's okay. But yes, you do.
Yep.
Great. And did the board have any comments on the number of clients or times per day as proposed? Seeing none. Any further suggestions or changes to Article Twelve, Section Twenty-two, Home Occupations, based on the conversation and amendments we've made today? Zoe and then Alex?
I just had a question on the exclusions, which is under section I. I know that there's automotive sales, you can only have one vehicle at a time, automotive detailing, one vehicle at a time is allowed. Anything more than that is excluded. Why is automotive repair excluded? What about one vehicle?
So, um, our sort of understanding, when we were putting this ordinance together initially, was that automotive repair would be more intensive than, uh, car detailing or, or even sales where the car would just sit on the property. Repair can cause a lot of noise, can cause a lot of nuisance. You could have oil spilling. We thought it would be, uh, safer to, to leave that out.
Just curious. Thank you. Alex?
All I was gonna request is that whatever language change we make to farm stands around square footage, that's reflected in B as well. So larger than forty square feet of retail space. Or footprint.
I heard us stay at forty. So no changes needed?
Yeah, no, no changes in the square footage, but just saying farm stand, retails, footprint.
Yep.
Do you mean, um, one B or?
Two B.
Two B.
Okay.
So the language that you're adding at the end of two A around retail square foot? Print?
Yes.
You would also add that language into the larger than squarey, forty square feet of retail, yada, yada. You'd mirror that language in both. Thanks, Alex. Amy, I saw you reach for your mic. Did you have a comment? Okay. Any other comments? So I'm just gonna say this right out loud. The new memo that we got tonight proposed separating out Article Five, which we did, from this and definitions. Are folks ready to go to definitions and vote on them together? Is that still a good approach or are we trying to vote on this separate?
No, we're voting on Article Two as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's cover definitions then.
Yeah.
I think we made it through the, the first part. Craig?
I have to find my memo.
I can read it for you.
Okay, Article Two, definitions. There are two changes proposed. The first is revise the definition for a single-family detached dwelling to remove the requirement that the structure have a length-to-width ratio of less than four to one. And. And the second, uh, to add a definition for potentially hazardous food, time, temperature control for safety food, to coincide with changes to home occupations. Just those two changes.
Thanks. Mr. Mercot, anything on definitions?
Still trying to figure out the previous motion.
The, the motion or the content that we moved to, to promote?
The temporary housing item was not definitions, right? It probably doesn't matter, but I was thinking it was definitions and that there was a merger of the two, but.
There's that.
But I, I do have a concern with the length-to-width ratio anyway. Most of the other stuff, um, in tier one, I don't take issue with. Do take issue with welding, uh, at a family member in a very bad welding slash propane cutting, uh, accident. And I really don't think that belongs in, uh, residential areas, period.
The duly noted. Did you have any questions about definitions?
Uh, well, those are in definitions, right?
Nope. In fact, we're in a different, we're now in Appendix A, Article Two definitions. I think we just made it through the Article Twelve and that's where the home occupations language was.
Okay, that would be Article Twelve. My concern about welding, but my concern with.
And we did update welding to read metalworking or woodworking shops.
I do remember that, uh, which actually intensifies. But, um. But the definitions includes the, uh.
It, it really.
It's not length and width.
Yep, it's just the length-to-width ratio and then adding in the definition.
I'm all set on how I'm voting, so.
Okay. Any discussions around definitions? Zoe?
I just noticed, I think that in the line, um, for the single-family detached dwelling, um, deleted a length-to-width ratio of less than four to one and a, and I think you didn't mean to delete a, so just.
Yeah.
That was my only, only issue of grammar.
Uh, staff, do you wanna remind us why we're proposing to remove the length-to-width ratio, which is essentially now there because it has to be there anyway?
Sure.
Uh, so state language that came into effect last year required municipalities to allow, uh, mobile homes and any of the other types of manufactured housing anywhere that, uh, traditional, uh, single-family homes, your, your stick-built homes are allowed. That four-to-one ratio, um, did seem to target the, the mobile home, um, sort of dimensions and build and is now essentially a defunct, uh, part of our ordinance. So we're.
Non-compliance with legal terms now included.
I don't know as for. Non-compliant, I guess. Our thought process was we have some very thin lots and so they, there are now designs and even modulators for skinny houses that are like, you know, twelve feet wide and go back, you know, forty feet.
Louisiana shotgun houses.
Yeah. And so, um, you know, there's a benefit to allowing that type of, uh, build, which this doesn't, um, or might restrict what dimensions you could have. And, and we think that the purpose for it was to, um, require, you know, that you had to have a stick-built, that you couldn't have a mobile home. So, yeah, it's a little bit out of date, but also it allows some, uh, variation in, in home opportunities in the future for people.
Thanks. Any further discussion about definitions from the board? Amy?
So now I'm confused. I wasn't before. The last sentence says, "A single-family detached dwelling shall not include mobile homes," as defined in here, "but shall include any other manufactured housing meeting these criteria." So I thought you just said that the intent, that the ratio change, I'm, I'm just confused now.
Yeah.
Because now it excludes mobile home.
So it has to be on a foundation, maybe?
That's a great question. Can we?
It could be the size of a mobile home, but on a foundation as opposed to wheels.
But then a tiny home is on wheels by state definition?
A tiny home is not a mobile home or a, a single-family detached dwelling. It has its own definition under state law. Well, let's look at what a mobile home definition is. So a mobile home is built on a permanent chassis, was constructed after June fifteenth of nineteen seventy-six. And meet the standards of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, um, requirements for a factory fabricated structure.
So if I can attempt to get Amy's question and just check for understanding. The first sentence that we're removing in this proposed change was to ensure that no one could build a home that looked like a mobile home, while also in the last part excluding mobile homes. And what the removal of this language allows is the ability to build something on a narrow lot that might appear to look like a mobile home or have a one-to-four ratio like a mobile home does, but is not actually a mobile home on a chassis. And this would allow the building of a narrow, long home that might have previously looked like a mobile home while still excluding a mobile home from a single-family dwelling.
But, but the intent is to exclude mobile homes from the definition?
Yes, in part because there are mobile home definition. It has its own definition and is allowed with that specific use in various places, separate from single-family detached. And if we created a single-family detached dwelling definition that included mobile homes, A, we wouldn't need a mobile home definition, and B, the places where they are different in ordinance, like a mobile home park being different from a, right? And so you, so the intention to say, yes, build a single-family home that's long and narrow, can't be on wheels, it's not a mobile home. We have those. We have places we put those. They're okay. They are not a single-family home. And here in the definition of single-family detached dwelling, it is important to differentiate that. So it is the shape that we are taking the prohibiting factor off of. Okay, thanks. Yeah? Did I say anything wrong?
No.
Great. Glad to hear that. Mr. Mercot?
So in this definition, it would not necessarily be a immobile. So in this definition, it would not necessarily be an immobile.
Yeah, it is like anything else, it's a single-family detached dwelling. That puppy is on lot.
On the lot permanently.
Can't, can't come out without jacking it up and paying for fees and moving it like they do on the movies.
I've seen a few of those houses move through my neighborhood forty, fifty years ago.
Any further discussion or questions on the definitions? There are two that we're looking at.
In your example, Shelley, you said, well, what about building a twelve-foot-wide home? But our number here is sixteen. I'm wondering if we want to reconsider that at all. You know, I don't know where sixteen comes from. A thought that popped into my head is, I believe building code has sort of restrictions on how small rooms can be, like a bedroom can not be any smaller than X number of square feet or something like that, or no, no smaller than one, in one dimension than something, or am I not, not remembering something correctly here? Like, I guess, in other words, is having this restriction on width here not that important? And we could just rely on sort of the restrictions around how big rooms can be inside of a building to make the, you know, like, make, make that sort of limit how narrow the building could be, rather than spelling it out here? And, and just, you know, making another thing for people to jump through.
Yeah, I'm afraid that I don't know the specifics around building code. I believe it's... I don't know as there's a minimum, like, width of a space. I know there's minimum heights. I know there's, we have a minimum of a dwelling unit of three hundred square feet for a dwelling, but I'm not sure beyond that whether there's minimums. We could come back to you with that information.
I mean, I'm fine, like, I'm fine with sixteen, just sort of wanted to, like, throw it out there, see if it was something we could toss, but...
Shop it around a little bit.
Yeah, you know, if it...
I think the changes being proposed is because of case uses and examples, and it sounds like staff would have proposed something other than sixteen feet if there had been impetus to do so, outside of mobile homes and tiny homes, both of which are named separately from this.
Yeah, I just Googled skinny houses, and apparently there's ones that are like ten feet wide.
Yeah, sixteen seems fine to me. Just wanted to see...
And an update, welcome at a future point, should somebody come in requesting a permit for a twelve-foot-wide house that's eighty feet long? Would love to hear about it.
Yes.
Great. If somebody starts manufacturing modulars locally. Great. Mr. Mercot?
Where's the sixteen feet coming from?
In definitions, one would partway through the third line down. So the line that starts on the left of point of at least sixteen.
It has to be at least four by sixteen?
No, just sixteen feet wide.
Oh, wide.
Well, horizontal.
At its narrowest point.
Right. As long as you want it. Doesn't, it no longer has to have the four-to-one ratio.
But it will still have to be sixteen at its narrowest point.
Sixteen by sixteen?
No.
It could be sixteen by eighty, it could be sixteen by...
By three thousand.
By sixteen, because if it was sixteen by fourteen, then fourteen's the narrowest point. So, yep.
So it's gonna be at least sixteen by sixteen.
Sixteen by sixteen, minimum.
Okay.
Yeah. Seeing no other discussion, I would be looking for a motion that would incorporate both of these sections that we just reviewed, as proposed, and noting with the amendments made tonight. Is there anything you were converging about that would change our motion?
No, just reminding you that we need a public hearing.
Steaming with the public, so I apologize. No, thank you very much. I'm gonna open this up to the...
If we offer food.
They would come. There's hot dogs in the back. I don't think it, I'm opening up the public hearing for a room that is empty. I'm gonna give it a minute in case there's anyone in the hallway. If so, they would come in, move to the podium, introduce themselves, state their address, and then speak for no longer than three minutes. And I'm closing it. Thanks, Linda. I'll be honest. I'm still looking for a motion.
Oh, nobody's made that?
What?
Nobody's made the motion?
No, no, it could be you. Oh, you were prepared for roll call.
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, two jobs. Anybody wanna make a motion? This has been some meaningful discussion that we are going to put into a proposal to City Council with a motion today, folks.
Okay. Well, they do make it easy for us, so. I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article Seven, Section Four, and Article Seventeen, Section Five of the Zoning and Land Use Code, to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for amendments to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Two, Definitions, and Article Twelve, Performance Standards, as proposed.
Tonight.
Tonight.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you both so much. Any further discussion on this motion? Mr. Mercot?
We're doing Article Two and Article Twelve.
We are. Yep, I discussed whether we wanted to or not a couple of times, and folks said yes, so we are. Any other discussion? We're gonna call the roll.
Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Mercot?
No.
Mark Roy, yes. Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
Zoe Lindstrom?
Yes. Motion passes. Mike, would you like to offer any feedback on your no vote for staff?
Article Twelve. I was prepared to vote for Article Two.
And you didn't like Article Twelve?
For the previously stated reasons, welding, and anything else that I may have said.
Metalwork. Yep.
Or metalwork as it's...
As we amended it. Yep, I snorted, that's where we're at, folks. We're gonna move on to B now. The Planning Board making a recommendation to the City Council for an amendment to the Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Two, Definitions, and Twelve... What? Did that one memo cover everything? Oh, no more public hearings. One less thing for me to forget. We do have an other business item for the Planning Board, continuing the creation of a planned unit development ordinance, providing greater development flexibility for residential, commercial, and industrial development. Once we are finished that other business item, we will review if there is any other, other business. Shelley?
Okay. Last time we met on this topic, we were working on an outline to capture the content that the Board would like to see reflected in the ordinance once staff begins drafting that. I just wanted to come back one more time with a couple of questions before we move forward with that. And then there was a question the Board had about incentivizing daycares and whether there were other uses that were in need for incentivizing. So I just want to run through a couple of quick questions and see where we end up. And if any, and I did make changes based on the last discussion, so if anyone had any comments or questions on the items in red, those are the items that were substantive changes.
So I want to make sure everyone in the Planning Board has the stapled packet with the red edits to it as we review this document, and that that's what we're looking at, as Shelley's gonna walk just through the content that her memo had.
Okay.
Thanks.
First question I had was on page one, so I added a preamble under number two, purpose. I didn't know if there was a benefit to adding purpose number eight at the end of that list, which would be other benefits as determined by the city. So it'd be a little bit more of a flexibility item, so if somebody comes forward with an idea and everyone thinks it's great and a real benefit, but it's not one of the things on this list.
No, thank you, says me. That's my opinion. Others wanna offer their thoughts on that?
You said no, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's really weird for us to have a purpose statement that says, "and other things." We spent a lot of time developing some clear purpose items. If somebody can't attach their project and proposal into one of the seven that are provided in addition to something other that they might bring forward, then that would be great learning for staff to bring forward to us at a future date. But if you removed items one through seven, I can't imagine our purpose being other. And it just feels weird for an, in a purpose state. That's my personal opinion. I'm not gonna die on that hill, but, no. My, my response to the question you asked, no, I would not find value in it. Love to hear from other people. Mike?
Because of my understanding that the whole document surrounds residential.
No, it does not.
Does not. So it could be like the material that we heard from Mike Gatto at the last meeting, it could include recreational or...
So when you move to page two...
Sorry, let's not jump around. In the purpose section, which I think is the one that you're talking about, Mr. Mercot, the reduction of infrastructure needs, the providing greater freedom of design, the clustering of development, all of those aren't specific to housing, and is where you'd see commercial or, or other uses being incentivized.
I'm not seeing much for, you know, commercial, industrial.
So just from my own understanding and how we can most efficiently move through this document, are you looking for things outside the purpose section, which we haven't gotten to yet? Or are you referencing the purpose section?
I, I thought the offering had some value at first, and I can understand the argument that you made. I just want to make sure that we're looking at all the opportunities that we heard from Mike Gatto, because it wa, it did seem a little narrow. Am I to understand that Section Three permitted uses is an expansion from where we were at two weeks ago?
No, that's how it was. That's how it was two weeks ago.
Simply that the discussion mostly surrounded housing.
That's the area of which we've had the most difference in input, I think, yes.
After losing a nice, solid business here in town, to Poland, we really need to start looking at much more to bring some sort of infrastructure in Lewiston that actually helps our bottom line, and not the opposite. I'm ready to move on.
Did anyone else want to weigh in on the addition of an eight that is not there yet that's other?
I had, I had two comments, one about that and one about what Michael was just speaking about. But I would be open to an eight, but I'm, again, I don't have strong feelings about that, just 'cause someone might come up with a creative idea that doesn't naturally fit, so I could go either way on that one. And then in terms of what Michael was saying, when I did the first read through this, when I got the packet, in the first paragraph and in Item Two C, I wonder if there is a way that we could talk about, like, principal structures instead of residential structures or diversifying housing, like, if we might put it in more generic, generic timeframes, particularly in the preamble and some of the broader language, so that it is setting us up well for the content that follows about the different areas of usage. Those are the three places I saw it at the bottom of the preamble and in Two C. I probably, I probably missed one too, so...
Yeah, in the preamble, that would look like removing the residential and just allowing for principal structures in the third to last line.
Yeah.
Of one as an example.
Yeah.
That's a great recommendation. It speaks to what you're looking for, too.
Yeah, that two-word phrase really targets what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
So it goes to multiple principal structures?
Yeah.
Just remove residential.
Would, is that feedback enough for you to be able to propose something next time and feel like you know what you're working with?
Yeah, and I think next time, when we do come back, you'll be looking at the draft of the ordinance. We won't be really working with that line anymore, but yeah, yep, we can definitely incorporate that.
Great. Alex?
Could, so, since this is a purpose section, this isn't, you know, this isn't like the list of like you have to meet, you know, A, B, C, right? Like, we spell it out a little bit further in the document in terms of like what we're looking for?
I wanna say that there's a couple of sections that require you to state your plan according to purpose.
Okay.
Is consequential language.
Got it.
Yeah.
Just saying, we're diversifying income, we're diversifying uses, like, there's, we're infrastructure, to your point, Mike, a better infrastructure use, like, there are so many big buckets here that whatever that other is should be invited to come forward. But I, I think it...
It may be challenging not to hit one of these.
I, I think that that's very likely. It'd be different if we only had like one and two, and then other things as you propose them. That would be a great argument, but just putting in other, on this long, very thoughtfully comprised, very comprehensive list around what our purpose is for doing that feels subversive to the many weeks that we have spent in this work. And I'm, I'm usually leave people an opportunity to lift up what we've forgotten, but by gosh, we've done a lot of good work to not forget. And I, and I can't imagine it, you'd have to put something completely off, infrastructure, only allow one income type, only allow one use type, and have some completely other purpose for it to come forward.
I will say, I, I find myself like Michael, thinking about the last meeting and the comments at the end of the meeting, and how, when I, reading this, it was really appealing to me, and the housing orientation was front in my mind, and so I do think, I wonder what we might learn about an orientation to the kind of purposes for commercial, industrial, recreational, that we, we haven't quite hit the mark as, as well on, on those ones, so...
Well, I think what he was bringing up last time is really encapsulated by Item Three here. Greater freedom of design that results in innovative, interesting, and attractive combinations of use and site layout, right? Because he was talking about like shared driveways, things like that. That feels like innovative site layout to me.
And that could be a combo of...
Yeah. So I guess that's my point, is like, we've got infrastructure in there, we've, innovation's a pretty big bucket.
Yeah. Unless you were doing something really boring, it would be hard not to hit any of these.
Here's a subdivision we've done a million times that looks like everything else, but I'd like to use this PUD, and I'm not being innovative, nor am I streamlining infrastructure, nor am I...
Yeah.
I mean, it would be really hard to not hit the qualities of the purpose of this document.
Yeah.
And I would still love to hear about them. And staff is really good about bringing forward suggestions and asking us to waive things or revisit something when something is too prohibitive.
Yeah, I don't think we need another.
All right, great. Sorry, sorry to go on that sidetrack.
Let's get to the red ones.
I did have a question in Section Two eligibility. Under two, where we say zoning districts where this is allowed, I think when we had written this, we weren't thinking about industrial, and since then you've added industrial to Section Three permitted uses, types of PUDs permitted, so I was wondering if we wanted to add the industrial zone to number, Section Two, number two?
Yes, yes.
Why wouldn't we just say it?
Okay.
All, all...
Thank you. I, yeah, 'cause I thought we had gotten to...
Why wouldn't we just say all districts?
'Cause I thought we had actually gotten to, in the conversation around being inclusive of and intentional around industrial, we said that if you can propose something that does, that's the whole point, if you can propose something that does these other things, we'll consider it anywhere.
Yep.
And so I don't know if you need any language here restricting to any particular... Like, if it's in Lewiston, and I don't know if that update is helpful enough for you?
Resource conservation?
I mean...
You could have an open space use, and I don't know what the opt, if they can meet the other things and they're coming in for com, we'll consider it, but the whole thing is we have to consider it, it's a multi-step process to consider it, it doesn't start it yet, and it opens the door for consideration. So if somebody wants to come in with, I don't know, some ecological Airbnb that they can say does all these other things...
Frog hotel.
In a conservation district that has a sandpit in the middle of it and will never get used for any, let's hear it. And that's the point of this, right? So I think in Lewiston is your geography.
Okay.
For, for Section Two, Item Two, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
All zoning districts, period.
And for funsies, just as a reminder of like free market influences, and as Mike Gatto would tell you, someone is not gonna propose it in a place that it's gonna be an uphill battle, that they're gonna have to, like...
Yeah.
It will never come to us if it doesn't make sense for a developer to invest in it in the first place, and I think that helps filter out a lot of the crap projects.
Okay, perfect. The next thing I wanted to just bring up, Section Four, Standards and Requirements, Number Eleven. I just want you to be aware that as we're developing the ordinance, staff is gonna look a little more closely at this and some of our other numbers in terms of what's really feasible. feasible for development as far as if it's not specifically an affordable housing project, what's, you know, what would be reasonable for percentages? So we may bring some options to you later that might not be this 30 and 20%, just so you're aware.
And it would come with rationale?
Yeah.
Because that's the work that you're doing. This one's great.
Similarly, the next page, A and B of 11, there was some discussion around affordability long-term and restrictions on, on, you know, either rental prices or what you could sell a property for and, and, you know, the value you could recoup over long-term. So the way we have it written right now, I just said a term will need to be determined for how long they have to provide a deed restriction for having rental units be affordable. You know, the state law from LD 2003 for the density bonus that that grants is for a 30-year period. I've heard other, you know, numbers thrown out there. So we'll come back with some ideas on that. For, B though, for affordable ownership units, it sounded like some members of the board were discussing wanting people over time to be able to have the benefit of the, the value of their property increasing. So we'll work on some timeframe and structure for affordability. Maybe over time, the amount of markup can increase, you know, maybe if you sell in the first, however many years it has to stay a certain amount affordable. I don't know. I mean, I guess that's kind of a discussion with the board because if we're waiving design standards, I feel like there should be, for the benefit of the community, the affordability should still be there. It should still be affordable down the road. So I'm not sure.
So but for ownership, like for rental, that makes a ton of sense.
Yep.
Ensuring that it remains. But it would be the resale of a property because like by definition, they would income qualify, whatever the standards are, but that income qualify for the purchase and original owner. And so your language would be about the resale.
Right.
Because like we're considering a new development, X amount of owner occupied and affordable for sale in this scenario, right? And so they would need to income qualify at the time of purchase. And the thing that you would be focusing on is any resale within a certain period remains linked and indexed to current, whatever that is.
That's right. Or we could limit long-term the amount it can increase, you know? So it's not just tied to the market, but there has to be some sort of an increment that still keeps it to a level of affordability.
Not tied to the market pricing, but tied to the income. That's what your income qualifying for affordable would be on.
Yeah, or maybe not tying it to affordable specific, but maybe it could increase no more than X percent beyond affordable, you know? So maybe there is some appreciation. I don't know. I mean, I guess that's kind of what I was trying to understand because I, I think there were some comments around like after five or 10 years, not having it affordable at all as required. And I'm wondering if there's benefit to keep some level of affordability in that equation.
I know Avesta in Portland had some condo clusters and they had some sort of formula for how they dealt with that, to keep it affordable at resale for a certain amount of time. So I bet you could.
So we could look, yeah, talk to them about that. Okay. So we'll, we'll look into some ideas.
I think we're going to have some discussion right now first. Alex?
One of the things that I find really appealing about homeownership for folks is that it is a good way to build wealth as a family, as an individual. And I think making sure that that is balanced with the desire to have it be affordable longer term is important. But yeah, I think in my, in my mind, like having people be able to buy it, it should be allowed to increase in value because that's really part of the big benefit of homeownership, right? Is that you can sell it at a later date and maybe come out a little bit ahead or something like that.
I, I will say what I saw with the Avesta experience and the people that I know, that both those, they did a really nice job balancing that. The people appreciated some wealth growth and it also helped to maintain some affordability. So it seemed like it played both ways. So I'll be interested in what you find. I don't know the hard numbers, but people were selling them and being able to appreciate the benefit of that. Amy?
So I am not in favor of this, of trying to preserve long-term affordability unless it's a situation where the buyers were subsidized, so they bought below market. If somebody buys at market, they should be able to.
Benefit.
Benefit from a market purchase, just like anybody else.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So if you're, that's a, that's a huge difference, right? You're not subsidizing the buyer. So somebody, somebody somehow is creating units that are affordable in the market world. So they're creating starter home inventory or whatever you want to call it. And so those purchases should be able to benefit from the free market.
Yep.
If instead you offered them below market and there was a, right, they were getting a subsidy because the developer was offering it for 30 grand less than it cost to build it, then they've received a subsidy and then I could see limiting the upside in some way. So this is too simplistic, this sort of description here, without going into a lot more detail.
Okay. That's helpful feedback.
I have thoughts, but is there others who want to contribute?
So I really, when I think about the intent of why we're naming affordable homeownership units, it's about the affordability for the income qualifying individual and not the market price and as it links to it. And so, for example, language that said for affordable homeownership units to get the blah, 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 density bonuses, yada, yada, they must be at 125% of AMI or 150% of AMI. So that deals with your first round. Any resales within 10 years must be sold to an income qualifying individual at whatever same amount of AMI at that time. That's going to limit how much they can put it on the market for while maximizing their wealth equity gain by being on the market and ensuring the intent of affordable housing being available for people who are near median income. That's going to get at that intent while still allowing the wealth equity to be billed for first-time home buyers or folks who are needing to buy affordable housing. And I think that's the balance I hear you talking about, Penn. In, when there are subsidies in place, which is like a very different mechanism of which the city already administers those, there was a, there's been a couple of projects, but the, there's a corner of Park and, sorry, Maple and Lisbon that is a duplex. The city owned, bought both, used a braiding of funding sources from home led evatement, and it limited the amount that could be sold for. And there was subsidy built in, right? So like $500,000 worth of renovation, it happened with all of these braided fundings and the home only was selling for like $100,000 in the first place. So there's the subsidy. The, the disincentive is addressed in that scenario and in other scenarios the city has already used, that if the subsidy is at play, which I don't think is the intent of anything in this language, but if the subsidy is at play, then the person selling the home is limited to how much equity they could make off a turnaround and resale and anything over a certain price needed to go back to the city's funds to allow further development. And that that was an important piece because like if we can increase the value of properties in our community, we don't want to limit that either. That's bad for taxes, that's bad for development, that's bad for the messages it sends. So if the point is around affordability, it should be tied to the income qualifying at time of sale or resale in a limited time period for resale, but not in any way cap, which is bad for a whole bunch of reasons. And so that's my input, both on some precedent the city has set and that this is not specific to subsidies, which would be a whole different ballgame in my opinion. But I think the preservation of entering into ownership in an affordable way, if that's the intent, then that's the thing that we incentivize and that's the thing we'd put some limits around. And I think, for what it's worth, I think 10 years is a reasonable timeframe. Good, good luck with your research and I can't see, can't wait to see what it comes back as. But, I mean, the, the point is to not be flipping, right? Like I, income qualified, I knew I was getting a better job next year, my wife was going to get employed and that's, we bought the house, now I'm going to sell it and get everything out of the market and I'm going to sell it to whoever I want to. That's the loss that you're trying to prevent against. And so I would get at that intent in a little different way.
Okay. That's helpful.
Amy?
And I don't see this language in here, but lots of times when they're, when you're talking about affordability, you're talking about 120% AMI, right? I just want to point out that main housing, their affordability index for first-time home buyers is actually almost 150 AMI. So if you're going to index the income qualification, I would index it to the, the current main housing income limits. Because they, they change, they vary by county.
So just use that language so you don't, yeah.
Right. The, the main housing, the current main housing income limits.
Yeah. And there is a lot of different guidance depending on different programs. And so if it's housing, stick to housing with AMI.
Yep.
It could get wild. Any other thoughts on either of those two items before we move on? Onwards.
Okay, great. Page five, section six. I just wanted to point out, I added some language in that first paragraph that's read that provides just a little more language stating that the board, I, I don't know if there was confusion last time, but we spent, you spent quite a bit of time on percents that could be allowed for different bonuses. And just want to point out that the language has said, and I've tried to clarify further, that that's up to that amount. So a maximum of 30%, you aren't necessarily granting 30%, but that's the maximum you could grant. Just how that, that's how we're intending to structure that section.
Do you think your added language clarifies that?
Yeah, okay. Um, so number five, that's where we get to the email that I had handed out from John Blaze. So. It also raises a point, so in our, in our bonuses, we don't currently list a density bonus for commercial, industrial. Our density bonuses are all based on residential. We don't, in practice, how that would look would be most likely an impervious surface coverage of the lot is how we would treat that. Because you are not granting height variance from the ordinance, right? So you can't give them higher than what the ordinance says. But, so that would be kind of the only way that you could increase their density. We have pretty high impervious surface allowances in our commercial areas, so it's not typically a limiting factor in Lewiston. It seems to be more of a limiting factor in Auburn, so that seems to be where their ordinance has that commercial density bonus. So just I guess wanted to ask about that, whether you want to provide a commercial density bonus for zoning districts that, you know, don't have 100% lot coverage allowances right now or 80 or 90%.
Do, do we have any other tools other than density bonus? So like, or impervious surface? So like we don't differentiate between like parking lot and roof for impervious, right? There isn't anything else finer detail or, I guess maybe my mind goes to like parking ratio, so like how much parking lot I have to make versus how much square footage the building is? Is there any way that we could provide a bonus in that realm?
The parking lot being in the basement of the building?
I mean, they can certainly always do that.
Which happened in a multifamily right here in the downtown.
Mm-hmm.
So the way this is currently written, you have, parking is one of the standards that you have flexibility on.
Okay.
So you could say, oh, instead of, you know, one car for every 300 square feet, it's one car for every 500 square feet or 600 square feet. So you do have that opportunity within what we've put together. But yeah, we don't currently in our ordinance have a differentiation with, it's lot coverage is lot coverage, it's total impervious. When I've, when I've talked to John Blaze, who worked for Auburn, about our ordinances, there's a lot of flexibility already that Lewiston has from what he can see about this. So, but, but we could certainly look at, you know, zoning districts that require more luck.
I apologize that I failed to make the jump with you, but as we were considering number five and John's input around other uses to, I'm not sure what the original question was, honestly, but it feels like as you provide a context for us, these other items might be considered for either inclusion in number five or something similar to number five being repeated, but specific to indoor sports and recreation, for example. And somehow we got from that to impervious. And I'm asking for you to help me make the jump and to think about these lists of uses that might be incentivized in the context of the asterix on number five.
Yeah. So I guess the question for me, so right now we've written, providing daycare gives you a bonus of 25% above the allowable base density depending upon the number of children served. So what is that base density? Are we saying that that's any residential onsite? Or are we, we don't have a way to, there's no mechanism in our ordinance right now with how this is stated for giving extra density for commercial? Is what I'm saying, because we don't have a commercial density number, like we do a dwelling unit density for a lot area.
So you're focused on the 25% and the base density and not so much the uses being incentivized?
Yeah, I think.
Might be a both and, but I'm just.
We can still talk about the uses, but I'm thinking, well, how, how do we actually do this?
Gotcha. Thank you.
And then, and then based on that, we can look at the uses and say, well, does it make sense that this unit, use, is this something we really? This was a list that economic development staff brainstormed. So it's not necessarily researched that we need more bakeries, as an example. Although there are some things like elder care that we are quite desperate for as well as childcare. So the items on this list don't necessarily have the same weight, if you will.
Yeah. And this list does not provide us information or speak to your impervious or baseline. Can we please separate those two and talk about your impervious then as a starting point?
Sure.
Because I think we could get into a pretty quick rabbit hole on uses, particularly when we don't have any research or data and just a brainstorm list.
Yeah.
Yeah. So currently, the allowable density in a commercial or industrial use is based on lot size and impervious. And there is no, just to get fully caught up, way to distinguish between parking and impervious based on roof, correct?
That's right. Yes, so your building height and then your lot coverage.
Right. Okay. So you are challenged to be able to provide language that would be included, that would incentivize commercial or industrial above a base density, because we don't really have a base density number outside of impervious. Starting with where we're starting at, what would be wrong with using impervious?
No, that, that's fine. We can certainly do that. Yeah.
It's the tool we got.
I think what you were saying, what I heard was the problem with using impervious is it's not that great of like a carrot. It's sort of like, oh, great, I can go from 80% to 90%.
Right.
Woo-hoo.
Or if I'm in Santraville, it's already 100%.
Yeah.
So that doesn't, it's not, there's really no incentive needed to be given at that point.
And maybe.
Doubly impervious.
Yeah, doubly impervious. So like it expels additional water beyond. I guess where I was, just to provide a little more clarity, where I was going with the parking question was sort of like, what are the other things that like a commercial property owner would care about? And like, I think about like, you know, Trader Joe's is always made fun of for their really small parking lots. And they do that because it increases retail space. You know, buying land is expensive, so they want to maximize shelf space. So just like thinking about it in that way, do we have other levers of like, hey, you can have more industrial space and make more money on rent or, you know, make more money making widgets because you have more widget-making space because we don't need you to put a parking lot in? You know, you can buy a smaller lot, you can put more, you know, more, more functional space, more money-making space.
Yeah. And I, and I guess the question is, do you want to sort of enshrine that like, hey, you can have X percent less parking? Or do you want to keep it the way we've written it, which is it's one of the many? Or do you want to keep it the way we've written it, which is it's one of the many dimensional standards that there's flexibility that they would ask you about? I mean, actually, it's like that in our current ordinance, even, that you have flexibility on parking. Um, if they can show they have a lesser or greater demand, but, um...
I mean, I think the, and I don't know how similar what we're looking at will be related to ordinance version framework and proposed language. We're naming a couple, I mean, base density is throughout. And that's m- most beneficial for residential uses, even multifamily commercial residential uses. It kind of misses the mark in terms of incentivizing commercial or industrial.
That's right.
What I'm struggling with is the format that we're looking at, items one through 10 in, it says, you know, to incentivize this, you get this. And so adding a new whatever that says to incentivize commercial or industrial uses, we will provide a bonus of waived 25% parking requirements, and it's not linked to base density at all. And you're specifically calling out the thing that you're incentivizing. And I don't, I don't know if that's useful to the way this gets incorporated into your, your final language, but I don't know, I don't know in which places, so I think even like, I mean, with the way that you're talking about public use daycare facility makes me think that it's not beneficial to smaller home-type ones that might get incorporated in a PUD and that it would only be commercial, for example. And so in, in the places where you're incentivizing commercial or industrial, maybe name it explicitly and then update the bonus to reflect the incentive of which we are able to offer, which really is parking. I'm just trying to match the thing that you're aiming to incentivize with the thing that will actually incentivize it and differentiate that from what we want to see incentivized, which is kind of a secondary piece to that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does.
Does that feedback make sense to others too? I mean, the other things that would be an incentive is like, you don't have to provide a buffer. And in terms of the things that we see, those applicants come in. Right, so like the other tools in our toolkit, to your point, it's, it's parking, it's buffers, buffers and screens.
Or, or just,
or not having a waste management plan which goes against our purpose, so we're not doing it. Not talking about that one.
Or just landscaping in general.
You can spew trash.
Yeah, that's not going to be the bonus that we're going to offer to day clients. So, yeah, so I mean, it's,
Anything that reduces their cost.
And there might be something to, I don't know how, like if we, let's say we get a, a 40-acre PUD, it's all of our purpose, we're all excited about it. It's got all of the uses into it. How do we think about buffer? Are we thinking about buffer of the industrial use on the 40-acre lot from these residential pieces? Or are we thinking the buffering and screening needs to be around the 40 acres? And is that for the residential, or only where the industrial use in the PUD abuts a neighbor on the 40 acres, and that's where we want the berm? And I say all this because therein lies your incentive, once you know the answer to that question. Right, so if we've got a auto repairs, like, this is a mini-community. And they've got a bakery, and a farm, and a farm stand, and a childcare center, and welding, which is dangerous. Got all the things in one spot, and an auto repair, full repair. Where's the screen go? And is the reduction of that, like if somebody says, hey, it's my job to fill all of these spots. If you approve it, I have to make the numbers work. I have to fill the, the commercial spaces, the industrial spaces, and the residential spaces. And I'll put the berm where it makes sense for me, based on my ability to attract these people, and you can tell me that I have to put it on the outside. But I don't actually have to put a berm in the middle of my 40 acres to separate uses, because that's my choice driven by my market, and my people, and yada, yada. And so like, maybe screening. Do you have your hand up?
Yeah. Well, I, I was wondering about, uh, incentives for shared parking, since that was a topic that was brought up at the previous meeting. Also reflecting on, a couple times I've been on Long Island. And you can drive around Long Island and think the whole thing is rural. Because, you know, you have trees on both sides of the road, a secondary road. But then you see the outside sign that says, it's a grocery store. Or a, what's the one that I remember going to?
A Winery?
Target. No, there was a Target. You basically took a left into this wooded area, and it opened up into one great big, I think it was only Target. No, but it could have been Target and a few other places. As far as the buffering, even neighborhoods were buffered from each other. It, it was like a, you, you go into, you go off the main road, and then you go through an entire development, uh, and these were homes. And it wasn't just a trailer park. And, uh, they were buffered from the, the next maybe 40-acre lot, 100-acre lot. So within, I'm not too concerned with, you know, what the developer wants to do within the property.
Same.
But buffering the whole thing from nearby neighborhood, possibly, depending on what the rest of the area looks like. Thinking about, uh, Auburn, where Longhorns and, uh, Olive Garden are, and you get the Subaru area, you get the, Andrew Scott Bank in the middle. I mean,
The building formerly known as Andrew Scott Bank.
Okay, what is it now?
The building formerly known as Andrew Scott Bank.
Is there anything in it? No, nothing in it. But a, as far as the, the, the differences between what belongs to Longhorns versus what belongs to, and, and there's some spillover. Obviously, in the agreements that the landowner has with their leases.
That's actually a PUD. That whole area is a PUD.
I didn't want to say that in case I was wrong, but.
Yeah, no, I, I believe it is, and that was part of what Mr. Gatto affirmed for us the last time he was in.
That's why I was thinking shared, uh, driveways is, as far as, uh, I, I know we have, uh, like, uh, cuts. I'm missing a word there.
Like a curb cut?
Curb, curb cuts. So, like, curb cuts become an issue.
Four businesses that have cuts in the title. You were just talking about curb cuts, I'm sorry.
Super cuts.
Super cuts.
Major cuts, there's a couple, go on.
But, uh, sometimes that can be a deterrent to a developer, if they're required to have so many curb cuts every so many feet, and, uh, in grass and e-grass, and if there's one, just like there is at the roundabout, uh, there at, uh, Longhorns. If that can be somehow embedded in this.
So, I just think back to your comment, Shannon, of like, wha, what are our levers? And then what is the base level of the levers, so that we can see if the lever is meaningful to anyone? Sounds like we've sort of covered density.
Base density is not useful.
For commercial. And then parking is sort of its own separate thing in this document already, as something that we can sort of provide variable guidance on. But would it be an incentive to be like, oh ho, if you do this thing, then you're going to like force our decision and we have to give you extra parking? Is that, is that of, an incentive there, or is that kind of too made up?
Nature of that, that Shannon mentioned, you know, will reduce parking requirement by 25%, for example, I think is helpful. That they, that they have kind of a,
I mean, it's tangible and concrete. And you've got it stuffed in this density bonus provisions and standards, and it's almost like incentives and density bonus. Right, because this whole section is like, you do these things, this is what you get for it. But if you're linking it to density bonus, that's where you're feeling like your hands are tied. And, and where this board starts to feel like commercial and industrial slips away from the focus.
Yeah.
Because density in our current code is really only related to residential uses. Whether it's commercial, residential, or, or not. And so I, I mean, I think, and, and in that, and that's like part of what I, you know, this is the if-then section, right? Like, if you do this, then you get this. And so, you know, we're naming things that we're incentivizing, and then the thing that we're going to give you because of it. And so I think the incentive for commercial and industrial being called out as a thing we want to incentivize. And I think your language should be carefully worded to say, um, commercial, industrial, and/or mixed use comprised of commercial and industrial. Because part of what we heard is the incentive being for a PUD that's only industrial. Screw mixed use, that's not even, for, for an industrial developer to find value in this. The value of it being industrial only, and all these other things, they're not going to be incentivized by the mixed use. And there are case examples where that could benefit us in our tax base. And so I think adding something in that says to incentivize increased commercial-industrial business placement in the city of Lewiston, and where industrial, comma, commercial, comma, or mixed use comprised of industrial and commercial, then this is the specific bonus that you get. And they can stack them, so like, good for you for also including residential, and look, we incentivize that here, here, and here. But to call that out specifically and then give something tangibly to it.
Yeah, and like, parking sort of spiritually fits with some of the other things in here around like, public transportation, or better integration, like, in a lot of ways, like, cutting down parking is almost a better incentive than a, a little density bonus for those things. I wonder, in terms of like formatting this, is it sort of like, you know, if, if residential or mixed use incorporating residential, you get density bonus? If industrial or commercial or mixed use incorporating industrial or commercial, you get parking bonus, like, da, 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 da.
I think some things could fall into both, and,
And you get the density bonus.
I want a good table. I want to like, I'm doing this, and I want this, I'm going to add it at the bottom. I don't know that that's going to work for you. I'd be curious how other communities have done it, because yeah, it's like a,
I have four transit allowances, and a child allowance.
I've got, I've got all the uses, and I've got a childcare, and there's a big open lot, and walking through the bog is incorporated. Put in my, everything Alex wants for bikes, and all of the spots are there. Like, check all the boxes, and let me go, let me go get my financing. Or come with my finance letter at the second meeting, no matter what.
Does that, does that feel actionable?
Uh, that's enough guidance, I think, for staff to move forward, and you'll be seeing us again anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think that was the last question I had.
Okay.
So I don't know if anyone had anything.
Amy does. Okay.
Justin, looking at this list and then the list that, um, Economic Development sent, I do wonder if item five, we might want to also include elder care facilities?
I did think that, like, just childcare or elder care, or, and there's multi-generational childcare and elder care facilities that are, I would say popping up, but actually they're really well-established in other places. We just haven't been talking about them a little bit here for the first time.
Yeah.
Uh, so I don't think that needs to be separate, I agree. Yeah. When I look at the uses on this lovely list, I see this more as a list of like businesses with like to see here. And so, yeah, I think elder care could fit in with, with childcare. I think a lot of what we're doing is doing this. And thank you, Economic Community Development. Alex?
A little orthography note, there's a cup, still a couple of PUD apostrophe S's in here. They should just be PUD lowercase s. Uh, unless it's possessive, but a lot of them didn't seem possessive, so.
I haven't even met them yet.
Hey.
Thanks. Here all week. I just feel that way. All right, so any other questions or comments for staff on this item before they bring us something else? I have one question for the board and staff, because I think this is a little bit about expectations and not about what our next steps are. But a little bit of both. So, like today, we spent a lot of time reviewing feedback. And it was a public hearing. And because it was a public hearing, it felt like we needed to get language that was clearly documented and amended that we then didn't get to see in our public hearing. Is there any chance that the first review of the document that you create next is not a public hearing? So that we can comfortably workshop it, not feel like pressure to get it through, or the public being here and worried when they're not seeing something that is likely going to have edits? We just set the expectation that you're going to create the ordinance, you're going to show us the first time that document, and we're going to talk it out. And if we all love it wholesale, which feels honestly really not likely, then, sorry, we missed an opportunity. Otherwise, then we can schedule a public hearing with language that has our feedback incorporated after our first review of a document, and we finalize it with the public then? Is the board okay? It means it comes in front of us again, but I feel like it's actually, allows this conversation to happen more quickly, because we know that we're going to see final stuff. And starting on a first-run draft proposal of final language is a great starting point to not hold a public hearing. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Yep.
Is the board all right with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is it fine if you, it's, so that would just be for your public hearing, but to bring you language and have you discuss it, and then initiate it, you're good with that? Or initiate where you don't have language, would you rather initiate?
You can give us a motion that we can choose to use if we are comfortable with the amount of edits that we've made live and in real time without being able to see it in a document or sit with it more. And if you nail this first round, given the amount of feedback on the times that we have oscillated on our own positions, you will have worked a miracle, frankly. And I would like for you to have the ability to take your first best guess at formal language, and for us to review that and have an open dialogue without you or us feeling like we've got to move something through in that session to find a language that can be acted on.
Okay.
Can I just clarify, so for example, with this, would they come back with a draft, or is this the version that you're talking about?
And you're pointing at the document that we were just reviewing? So this is actually a working document. This is not a, this doesn't look anything like you're going to see it next time. And I guess that's my point. It's going to come, and it's going to look really different, because it's going to be put in the forenet of our,
And have that not be a public hearing?
Correct. So that we would see a draft document, the way in which we are trying to finalize it, to discuss, and it not be sent out to the public that this is something you should weigh in on, because frankly, it's probably not going to be what they should weigh in on.
And you're, you're really referring to the public hearings tonight, not the PUD, because that wasn't a public hearing?
I am actually, yes. Yes, no, I'm referring to both. The public hearings that we had on language that we were seeing, based on us workshopping it, and then we're seeing that language tonight, was in a public hearing. What I think that you would have likely done, and it sounded like you were thinking about, was taking this, creating the actual ordinance language, introducing it during a public hearing in our next one.
Probably not, no.
Great.
Yeah, no, because that's going to still have a lot of things to be vetted out with.
I guess that's my point, is I would really like to not have it be a public hearing when we're still in the wordsmithing stage, and it felt like we were doing that tonight. And God bless that there wasn't a public to be here for it.
Yeah, no, I think, I think, uh, this is, we're doing an ordinance from scratch, so this is going to take a number of workshops.
Yes.
Yeah.
Agreed. So the next one will give us actual language that looks the way it will, and that will be what we workshop?
Yes.
Awesome.
And it, and it will be in a little while. It will probably be a few months before you see that.
That sounds great. Happy summer to everybody. Okay. Is there any other, other business? Mr. Merk.
Maybe getting ahead of myself and going back at the same time. So, so the introductory led it to the last item we discussed. Said that, uh, we had initiated it on September 5th. Now, we had our initial input on February 10th. And we discussed it on March 24th and April 14th. And I assume that, uh, April 14th was the night that Mike Gatto is here?
Yes.
Okay. Because I happen to have a copy of the minutes for the 14th. I'm going to need to, uh, be refreshed as to what April 28th was. Or did we have a meeting on April 28th?
Uh, we did have a meeting on the 28th. We did not discuss PUD on the 28th. It, there were three, um, applications before you.
What were the three applications?
There was a solar project for Poly Labs. There was a 48 apartment building, uh, set of buildings out on Main Street.
On Main Street.
And, uh, three lot subdivision.
Gold star for Shelley, who did not hit the phone a friend, though Linda was at the ready with the answers. Credit for staff where credit's due, well done.
Okay. I, I just, I thought I seen the minutes, uh, but, uh, probably didn't print them out. I just want to make sure before we get to the next item.
I don't think we have minutes ready for tonight.
Oh, well, that might be.
The, uh, the agenda does call for us to review minutes from the April 28th meeting.
Where, where this?
Oh, at the next one, so there is no reading.
Oh, I didn't see that.
It's not really an agenda item, that's fine. Second agenda item that says we're not doing this agenda item. Zoe?
Yeah, I just have a question, sort of given my penchant for and enjoyment of, um, sort of grammatical wording, you know, these kinds of things. When is the best time for me to bring forward suggestions? Is it just during these, like, times, or is it like ahead of the meeting? For transparency, for efficiency, like, I don't want to, you know, be bogging things down.
Just a suggestion. Lucy will send an email, then copy everybody. She has a penchant for that as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
The difference between edits and minutes, and edits in this type of language are two different things that might be handled differently. A, you could volunteer to proofread stuff that's coming to us in an advanced session. I don't know how often you actually have things in advance of your Thursday. And there is no staff available Friday, Saturday, or Sunday to read or incorporate your edits. And there is no staff available Friday, Saturday, or Sunday to read or incorporate your edits. And so they would need to receive them early Monday morning and then we would need to get a revised document that shows those edits live in the meeting for any of your feedback to be effective outside of meetings. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, ideally, I suppose if you wanted to like bring a set of like edits that could get passed out for people to look at and everybody could say, yep, we like these, and you could just sort of like have it as one item, like Zoe's grammatical edits are all great. So you could email that out, I suppose.
Yep.
To, to the board. It's not about, it's not about a specific project, so I think that that's fine as far as open meeting law would go. So if you had that, you know, let's say on a Friday or a Saturday, you did want to email that out, then the board could say, hey, we all loved it. Any, any changes to what Zoe wanted? No, we, we want to incorporate these. So we, we could do it like that.
That does regularly happen with minutes already.
Yeah. Okay. So basically the, the same kind of thing for minutes could happen for other types of things. Are we only talking about minutes here?
I would, I would put a caveat in and I would offer staff to, to be clear about it, but do not wordsmith the memos. Do not touch anything that comes from an applicant that is not staff at any point. Those aren't ours to suggest edits to, nor do we have any ability to change them.
And I think it would be best if you focused on grammatical content.
Right, yeah, well, I don't probably even have time to do anything else, but just if I'm like, oh, sentences better with a comma.
Because that's easy for the board to have consensus on. If it's a list of suggested changes, then that's going to get confusing and that's better done with the board in person on an item-by-item basis.
Is something to look at. So if you can email it for it to be printed, even if it's before the meeting.
Yeah.
There's a big difference between, take all the apostrophes out of the capital D and the lowercase s and on line item one, this should be a comma, on line item three, this should be a semicolon, I'd like to see this T capitalized, even if they're all right. That's a hard thing to verbally go through without a visual reference.
Yeah, that's kind of, yeah, that's sort of what I'm getting at, yeah.
Alex.
I was going to say, I think I have a memory of Lucy doing this and using correspondence as the mechanism for doing it. So that would be what we would do, right? So it would, this would be sort of submitted like-
If it was emailed in advance.
That's right. Then we could say there was edits to such and such made by Zoe that you all received by email or you have copies at the desk or whatever.
Part of that, Zoe, is it introduces it into the public record. Right now. Was that your question?
Uh, yeah, and then since we have two people who will be doing this, possibly, is the idea that like independent, just to be clear about this, independent work gets submitted, comes in as correspondence, then it gets agreed upon by the board, right? That would be the process?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I've never seen Lucy do it to anything other than minutes. So if Zoe wants to focus on the procedural language, we'll have a nice little team there. Yes, sir?
That's a good clarification, because I, I was losing part of the discussion. Lucy does it to the minutes. And I've noticed, even with some of our hard-coded ordinances and such that are on file, that's 10 years old, 20 years old, has grammatical capitalization, commas. Commas in the wrong place can make a different meaning.
Yeah. Yes.[1716.01]